November 27, 2018. If you'd all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Legions.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Ms. Rodriguez. Could you call the roll for tonight's meeting, please?
Councilmember Bill DeLaPeña.
Present.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember McCoy.
Present.
Mayor Fox.
And I am here. Item four is a request for continuance of any public hearing or agenda item. Any items that council would like to continue or recall. All right, hearing none. We'll move to item five. No special presentations tonight, Senate Clerk? Okay. And then we'll move to item six, public comment.
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may refer to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Six individuals have presented cards, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes, and the yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Our first public comment speaker is Adam Haverstock, followed by Lydia Cleaver. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers. Adam Haverstock, I am the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism at the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to just give you a couple updates on behalf of your chamber. First and foremost, I have an exciting event to tell you about. It is the Thousand Oaks State of the City, which is coming up on Tuesday, December 11. That is a lunchtime event at 11:30 a.m. till about 1:30 p.m. And the most exciting feature of that event is going to be our keynote speaker. We're very excited to have Mayor Andrew Fox as our speaker that day, giving the state of the city. That event is always a huge engagement. It's going to be at Cal Lutheran at the Gilbert Sports Arena, and tickets are on sale at the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce website, canehochamber.org. Second thing I wanted to bring up was an update on tourism. So we received our tourism numbers for October year-to-date, which obviously is before all the recent events happened. But so far, we are above the 2017 tourism numbers that converted to transient occupancy, excuse me, transient occupancy tax by 2.4%. And anecdotally, I've heard from our hotels that because of the fires we've had recently, there's been both a lot of evacuees and also many first responders staying in local hotels. And so we think that trend is going to hold till the end of the year, and we will see an increase in our transient occupancy tax receipts compared to 2017, if that is a silver lining. And then next, I wanted to mention that finally, the fall issue of the Caneo View Magazine is out. I hope you all have received a copy already. There's some really great items in here. First and foremost, the cover article is about Los Robles Hospital. It celebrated its 50th anniversary, and so we talked about its services. In addition, there's also a really great article that is a fireside chat with all three of the mayors from the cities within the chamber's service area who are all retiring this year from the city council. And so we decided to bring them together, ask them some questions about their service, and made a really great article that talked about the three of them. So unless there are any questions, that does conclude my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Lydia Cleaver, followed by Lisa Rene Pavlovich.
Hello. I, um...
Do you want to move over to the other microphone?
Sorry.
It's okay. You're good.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Much better.
Yeah. I was not prepared well. I just found out about this council. I live on Earps, 1977, and I live across this national, natural reserve area, which was burning for seven days. And I'm not complaining about anything. We had a lot of hardship, but I'm looking into future. And it looks to me, in the middle of the city, with buildings and developments around that huge hill, we still have a natural reserve area, and that area was burning for seven days. It was so much wood there, dry wood, any kind of wood. Nobody can put off the fire. And I like to know why. When I talked to city person, and they said, "It's kind of my fault. I moved there in natural surroundings." But when city gives the permit for development and housing, they probably should change the zoning for the area across the street. It's just absolutely impossible. I lost about 60 trees. My house, my garden, did not burn only because my daughter and my grandson was absolutely watering it for two days. We spent, okay, I'm not going to get into that, but I'd really like to, somebody to look into changing the zoning of that natural reserve area, which is 80 acres. And I do have a parcel number, and I know it's Earps 2100, and I know who owns that property. So, but nothing we can do. And now we had to cut all trees on our property, and we're living... And actually, across the street from the property, a little bit left, is a middle-high school. And I do not understand how kids are not affected by all this. It's natural reserve area where we have homeless, where we have dirt, where we have horrible, horrible fence, which is absolutely do not belong to a nice city like Thousand Oaks. I love this city. That's it. I do not know whom to talk to, and whom to talk and how to proceed about it. But I think it has to be done.
Okay.
Absolutely. It's just impossible. We cannot leave... My insurance is, we're canceled from 10 different companies. My fire insurance doesn't even cover landscaping because it's a risk-stay fire insurance. They're just canceling on us, because it's too much wood on the other side, not clean, piled, and...
Thank you.
Thank you. So if somebody can tell me whom I can talk to...
Okay, we'll have somebody from staff talk to you.
Yeah, that would be nice, because I do not know how to start it.
You got it.
Thank you.
Okay. Lisa Rene Pavlovich, followed by Elizabeth Olson.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. I'm Lisa Rene Pavlovich, Vice Chair of Caneo Valley Pride. We wanted, as, I'm here representing the executive board, and I think if I were presenting a plaque to the city council of Thousand Oaks to thank you for sponsoring the Pride event that we had September 22 at the park right out front. If I put it on here, doesn't it show? And City TV, can you project it? Okay. So yeah, we just wanted to express our thanks to the city council of Thousand Oaks for sponsoring the event and for being so supportive and for awarding, we were one of the recipients of the CEEF grant. So we just wanted to say thank you, and also for the official commendation that we received from Claudia Bildelapena. It was very great. So just wanted to say thank you for our support.
Thank you. Elizabeth Olson, followed by Alan Golub.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Olson. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, first time in front of the chamber, and thank you for letting me be here. November has been a very tough time for our city, and I feel like we need a big collective hug. And so I'm coming to the city council with an idea for a community hug, and the reason I'm bringing it to you is that it would require blocking of the streets for a few moments. So as luck would have it, the 12th day of Christmas is on a Saturday. It's on January 5, and so I'm proposing at 8:05 a.m., wherever you are in the city, along our hug route, people would just come to that part of the city, stand together, hold hands for approximately 15 seconds, say, "I see you. I see you. You are my neighbor," and then go about their day. So the route that I put, I tried to put in as few intersections as possible so that we wouldn't have to block traffic, but I'm bringing it to you because we would need to block traffic for that short time period while people are standing, giving each other a hug, holding hands around the city. The route would encompass the Oaks Mall, where we had a shooting in March, part of Borderline, and the areas affected by the fire. So I just am coming to you to get support for this and also to maybe get some advertising. And then it occurred to me after I wrote this up that I work for a security company. I knew that before I wrote it up. But we might also be able to provide some security guards for the intersections that would be blocked during that time. And it would be at 8:05 in the morning and last until approximately 8:15. So 8:05 representative of our area code, 15 minutes representative of the victims of Borderline and those that were lost in the fire in Malibu. So that's my proposal, and that's why I'm here.
Thank you. Alan Golub, and our last speaker is Kayla Burt. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mayor Fox and members of the council. On behalf of Mayor Steve Windmeyer of Coeur d'Alene, I'm here to personally give my condolences to your city for the fire and the incident at Borderline. In our city, we had Sergeant Moore that was killed on May 5 of 2014. So as a city, we share the loss of an officer. We also had a mass shooting at a home of a transient coming from Michigan across country that killed four members of the family and kidnapped two kids. So I just want to say that my mom has been a volunteer for 17 years at the city, and she's a snowbird, so I come down here semi-annually. But I just want to say that the Coeur d'Alene Press wrote a wonderful story. I was honored to make a poster to remember Sergeant Helus, and they published that in a big display in the Coeur d'Alene Press. So I also mentioned that, and the feeling is, I've been here since the fire, that I really sense this community coming together through this incident. And as was said at the memorial for Sergeant Helus, with his name being H-E-L-U-S, putting an A, "Heal Us," I really get the sense that Thousand Oaks will be the, will really be the point of which our nation is going to heal. I really believe that the country will come together because of what happened here. So thank you for letting me be a resident for a few weeks here.
Thank you, sir. Our last speaker is Kayla Burt.
Hi, thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Fox and council, for letting me make this public comment. My name is Kayla Burt. I actually was born in Agoura Hills. I currently live in Sherman Oaks. I'm here tonight firstly to acknowledge the hard work that you guys and the first responders have had to complete over the last few weeks. I can't imagine what has to be done. I also want to acknowledge the emotional support and financial support from the community for both the fire victims and the victims of the Borderline shooting. It's really inspiring. I'm here tonight, though, to address something that's not as easy to talk about, that I feel like is not really being spoken about, and that's the preventative or reparative measures that are taken after the Borderline shooting. I want to make sure that the conversation is happening, even though it's hard to talk about. I want to learn. I really did some digging in the websites, and kind of going through any navigable source that I knew of, to try to locate any preparedness plans for active shooters, and I wasn't able to locate any. So I want to know where those are, or how the public can have access to those. I want to know if the, how the community can be involved in potentially, you know, refining, kind of communicating or building from those plans that are in place. And I'm also curious, just in what capacity could Thousand Oaks assist in upholding laws that the state has? For example, the gun violence restraining order that we have in California. Kind of what ability does Thousand Oaks have to uphold that and protect the safety of its citizens? Of course, you guys know this isn't the first shooting this year. And, you know, I just, I think there's quite a bit to learn, and I would just really like to know more. And I can imagine that a lot of other community members want to know more, too. And again, understanding it's really hard to talk about, but that's all. I want to thank you guys for your time.
All right. Thank you, Gata. That concludes our public comments, and let me go to the city manager for any follow-up items.
Thanks so much, Mayor Fox. Just a couple items by means of follow-up. The speaker in regards to, that lived on Earps Road with regards to the adjacent open space area, I believe is referencing Softly Trails Park area there. So I was going to have Chief Spikerman, if you don't mind catching that resident out in the lobby and having a conversation with her. She's right in the front row here. The resident in regards to a proposal for a hug around Thousand Oaks, I was going to have deputy city manager, I see he's already on it, Gary Rogers, catch her. And then, as it relates to the questions about active shooter training and preparedness, I see, Marta, are you up there? If you don't mind trying to catch that resident in the lobby there, just for the public's benefit, we do have a pretty robust active shooter training program. We've completed that training at a number of locations, and make that available to anyone, any major business or corporate entity of interest. We've done it at CLU, at the Oaks Mall, here at City Hall, and at various CRPD facilities. So it's certainly something that we're aware of, and are always trying to strengthen that program. So with that, I'll pass it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Move to item 7, that's our consent calendar. Any items council would like to call special on this? Ms. Bildelapena.
Thank you. I'd like to pull item 7F, as in Frank.
Okay, 7F. Any other items? All right, hearing none. Entertain a motion for the balance of the consent. Mr. Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Mr. Adam moves. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. Prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0.
And that is approved. We have one ordinance? Do you have to read an ordinance on that?
The ordinance title is an ordinance repealing in its entirety Title 5, Chapter 23, and adding Title 5, Chapter 23, Adopting Licensing and Operating Regulations for Vending on Public Property and Amending Section 4-3.415, Modifying Regulations Concerning Commercial Vending Vehicles Near Schools, Ordinance Number 1656 NS.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Item 7F, Ms. Bildelapena.
Thank you, Mayor Fox. I see that this is an agreement between Bird and the City of Thousand Oaks, and Bird being the company which runs the electric scooters. And I apologize for not giving staff advance notice that I was going to ask questions about this, but I was just wondering how we will be dealing with any complaints that may be coming from CLU, where they will be doing their pilot project.
Good evening. Actually, CLU is at the table with us as a partner in this temporary agreement, interim operating agreement. They are, we're the ones with the interim agreement, but frankly, they're the ones at the table talking about how to implement this appropriately.
And if I may, just jump on and add a little bit more on that, as many in the public may be aware, and I'm sure many council members, there's certainly been no shortage of articles and information regarding these scooter mobility companies, and their deployments often happening before cities have had an opportunity to engage with the companies. In this particular case, Bird approached California Lutheran University, and the city quickly engaged in that discussion as well. And our reason for doing so was to try to put some clear parameters in place for what would be acceptable in our community, and to put some parameters in place that would allow us to revoke the ability to, should we have major issues that come forward. So this actually puts some protection measures in place. I think it's a best practice, is something that other communities haven't done, and they've suffered consequences because of that.
Exactly. I don't want to see us in newspapers as other cities have been with major issues with these electric scooters. So it is temporary, and I'm glad to hear that we can revoke. Thank you.
You want to move 7F?
Move to approve.
Okay. Discussion? Prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0.
And that is approved. We're going to move to item 8. That's our public hearing for tonight. Item 8A, Madam Corr, could you call 8A for public hearing, please?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A regarding municipal code amendment to amend certain sections of Title 6, Chapter 5, smoking to include electronic smoking devices. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing, and we do not have any public speakers.
Thank you. Ms. Lieberman, you going to handle the report?
I am.
All right, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Fox and members of the city council. Tonight, we are presenting to you an amendment to Title 6, Chapter 5, of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code pertaining to smoking. The last comprehensive amendment to the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code occurred in 2008. At the time of that amendment, electronic cigarettes and vaping was not yet in existence. Once electronic smoking devices became widely available, it was unknown whether or not they would be a safer alternative to cigarettes. Regulations regarding the use of these devices were not immediately put into place by the state until scientific studies showed that the use of electronic smoking devices are associated with many health risks. In 2016, the state of California added electronic devices delivering nicotine or other vaporized liquids to the definition of tobacco product within many of the state's codes. The inclusion of this definition allows the regulation of e-cigarettes and other electronic smoking devices in the same manner as traditional cigarettes. The proposed ordinance amendment, adding new definitions of electronic cigarettes and tobacco products, will align the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code with current state regulations of electronic cigarettes and other forms of vaping, and will allow the city to regulate electronic cigarettes and other electronic smoking devices in the same manner as we do all other forms of smoking. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Questions for staff? Ms. Bildelapena.
Thank you. I was hoping to get Detective Margaret Bougarin back in here, because she needs to know about this. I know she's talking to one of the residents. The reason being is that, first of all, obviously, I think this makes sense to amend our municipal code ordinance at the time, at this time, but also, we need to help police, give them the tools that they need in order to go after vaping cases, so to speak. They say it's a major problem, it's a health problem, public safety problem, on school campuses. So while this is a good step in the, a good first step in the right direction, I think that we do need to probably explore other options so that police can do their work and do it well. And that's why I wanted Detective Bougarin here, because she presented in front of the Conejo Coalition for Family, Youth and Family, a few weeks ago, where that topic was brought up. So...
We actually have had conversations with the police department. We're aware of the issues that they're having with respect to citing students on campus. Traditionally, school campuses are off limits for city council, for cities. Cities don't have jurisdiction to regulate what goes on on those campuses. It's my understanding that the school does have a policy that prohibits vaping, so they can suspend students, not necessarily cite them. So one of the things staff will be following up with, the police department and possibly the school district, of course, is whether they are interested in adopting their own regulatory ordinance. There's a lot of logistics that go along with that. Again, if it's a police department that's citing them, then the police department has to go to court for these citations, so there's a monetary cost to doing that, which we haven't even started looking at, but we are aware of the issues.
Okay, that's very good. Now, just to be clear, the Coalition for Youth and Families consists of a park district, and the school district, and the City of Thousand Oaks, representatives from all three agencies. And the school district was looking to the city for us, for help regarding this. And that's why I brought it up, but I would like to continue this conversation with our partners in the community. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll definitely do that.
All right, any other question? Mr. Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. The report specifically cites tobacco or cannabis that will be, fall under this municipal code amendment. I'm presuming the other vaping substances will fall under the amendment as well.
It does. It covers all products that can be vaporized.
Anything that you can vape. Okay. Want to be sure of that. Thank you.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My questions deal with enforcement of it and prosecution, and I'm wondering, is this something that the city is going to take on the prosecutorial aspect of, or is the DA's office going to file charges on cases like this?
Since it's a municipal code, it would be the city's responsibility to enforce it. Whether it's charged as an infraction or a misdemeanor is at the discretion of the prosecutor, but it's the sole responsibility of the city to prosecute those citations.
Unless and until the state steps in and passes a state law prohibiting it, which is quite likely to happen here in the very near future.
We were hopeful they were going to do it a few years ago.
Yeah. I think we're all surprised that we're having to do it ourselves here. Okay. Thank you.
All right, we have no speaker cards on this, so we're going to close the public hearing. And any further follow-up from staff?
No.
Okay. All right, hearing none. We'll entertain a motion. Mr. Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. Move 8A, the municipal code amendment that includes electronic smoking devices.
All right, Mr. Adam moves 8A. Discussion on his motion? Hearing none. Prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0, and your ordinance title is an ordinance amending Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, Section 6-5.102, 6-5.105, and 6-5.106 of Title 6, Chapter 5, Smoking to Include Electronic Smoking Devices.
All right, and that is approved. That concludes our public hearings for tonight. We're going to move to department reports. Item 9A is the fire status report, and that'll be provided first by Mr. Powers, and then our fire chief, Chief Spikerman.
Thank you, Mayor Fox. I just wanted to make a few introductory comments before handing it over to staff. We had put a placeholder on this agenda in order to provide you with the latest information in regards to our fire recovery efforts. Wanted to first acknowledge the very hard work of our public safety professionals, namely, Chief Spikerman, who, in the depths of both of these fires, him and I were on the phone together as he was rummaging through the backcountry, and just did an amazing job in servicing the citizens of Thousand Oaks. What you're going to hear from tonight is just a comprehensive update on where we stand today. You will hear in the report sort of our total loss update of 31 residential homes in the City of Thousand Oaks, and one commercial building, and our plans for helping residents that were impacted, whether they lost a home, whether they lost a business, or whether they had damage to their property, how to help them get back on their feet. Our fire recovery priorities that you're going to hear in just a few moments, deal with open space, watershed, and adjacent homes. We've certainly heard from one resident with some concerns regarding that tonight. We recognize that that's top of mind for many of our residents, and our staff has been actively engaged with partners at the state level already in walking those watersheds and making some determinations. We're going to hear about debris removal and mitigation, rebuilding of damaged homes, a process for that, utility rate adjustments for property owners from public works, local and federal assistance programs available, and our overall outreach and communications efforts. But to open us up this evening, I wanted to hand it over to Chief Spikerman.
Mayor, council members, city manager, Powers, I would love to take credit for all that hard work, but I can't. There was 4,500 other firefighters out here for the last two weeks, you know, working hard to put these two fires out. And I'll talk a little bit here also, while those two fires were going on, we still had other emergencies that we had to respond to, plus four additional fires that started that we had to respond to. And, you know, thank goodness the wind wasn't blowing, we kept them small, and then we're able to reengage our resources back into the Woolsey Incident. So you can see on the map, there was 96,949 acres burned in the Woolsey Incident. The Hill Fire, 4,300 acres, that started about 2:00 in the afternoon. As we had resources responding to that fire, the Woolsey Incident started, so I heard resources heading into the east end of Simi Valley while I was responding to the Hill. The Hill started, the Hill Fire started in Hill Canyon, quickly raced out of Hill Canyon, crossed the 101 freeway. Anybody who was on the 101 freeway quickly realized that people were turned around, going the wrong direction on the freeway, because you could not, you could not get through the canal grade when the fire was crossing, crossing the freeway there. So it burned into the springs, the old spring scar, and with some retardant, and, you know, the active firefight with our firefighters, we ended up controlling that one to 4,300 acres. We were expecting it to grow the next day, and it didn't, which was great for us, because then we could focus all of our resources and all of our efforts on the Woolsey. So you see the size there. I have a few other statistics for you that I gathered from this. And on the Woolsey Incident, there was over 60 miles of construction, line construction put in. That's what we do with our hand crews and dozer lines, not including all the hose lines that were put in to stop the fire. And all those lines end up getting what we call, it's called suppression rehab or suppression repair. And then we go back in, and we meet a certain standard to repair those lines, so that the vegetation can grow back in a safe manner, and it reduces that likelihood of flooding. So over the course of the Woolsey Incident, we had 3.6 million gallons of water dropped by helicopters, 3.3 million gallons of retardant from fixed wing air tankers. One of the things that I'm really happy about is the amount of injuries that we've suffered on the Woolsey and the Hill. As firefighters go, there was 88 non-reportable injuries, which means they were minor, and we had one reportable injury, and that was an individual who was struck by a private vehicle at about 2:00 in the morning up near Deer Creek. And when we responded to the hospital to make sure that they were all right, and got his rest of his team members to him, he was already up walking around. So that was a good thing. The next day, he walked out of the hospital. So we had very few serious injuries. We had 40, over 40 other cooperators that worked with us to fight the fire, and that's everything from other agencies, other fire department agencies, as well as... injuries. We had 40, over 40 other cooperators that worked with us to fight the fire, and that's everything from other agencies, other fire department agencies, as well as county and city agencies. And so we, you know, we reach our hand out to all of you and say thank you, because that's one of the things we can't do on our own. We need help from you guys. We need help closing roads. We need that leeway to be able to get our firefighters into these places and have that safe access. And we know that when we have to put evacuation orders in, there may not be smoke in the air, but for us, at least firefighters, while we have those evacuation orders, we know what that potential is. And we can't put citizens back in there until we know it's safe. And we know that you guys have to work with us to do that. So we thank you for that. 11 EOCs, which are the Emergency Operations Centers, were activated in 11 different jurisdictions. Nine evacuation centers were set up and utilized. And I think the next slide shows, just in the City of Thousand Oaks, there was 1,100 sheltered that actually utilized the shelters. We had 20 dignitary tours that we gave, including the governor, the governor-elect, as well as the President of the United States. Any type of those tours are going on, that brings a lot more individuals into those fire areas that we have to control, but they were managed well with no, with no issues. Like I said earlier, we had four other fires that were notable. One was the Casitas Fire. It only was an acre, but it had potential to get bigger. We had the Briggs Incident, that was off the 126. It grew to be about 25 acres, and we controlled that. The Lynn Fire was right here in Thousand Oaks, was a separate fire than the Hill, but close to it. I don't know what the cause of that one was at this time. It's still under investigation, but that was 25 acres, and endangered or threatened homes immediately. Once it was ignited, we utilized resources from the Woolsey incident to control that quickly, and we lost no structures. And then the largest one was the Peak Incident at Rocky Peak on the 118, which grew to be about 186 acres, and we lost no structures on that either. But with coordination with LA County and LA City and the resources on the Woolsey, we were able to get that one and hold it to 186 acres. You can see the slide here, there was 5,740 acres of open space burns in the City of Thousand Oaks. Over 4,000 firefighters were actively fighting those fires for the last 14 days. And then 31 residents in the City of Thousand Oaks and one commercial structure were damaged. From the reports that I'm getting right now, in the whole Conejo Valley, it was just under 300 structures that were damaged or destroyed. So, and I think that's what you guys are here to talk about, is those recovery efforts. Currently, starting tomorrow morning at 8:00 in the morning, the Ventura County Fire Department's going to be going into what we call a Plan 2 flood. So we are already preparing for the rain that's going to happen Wednesday night in the burn areas, as well as the City of Thousand Oaks. So what we're staffing, or what we have available, is at all fire stations, we have sand and sandbags. We've identified 11 drop points throughout the county that we're putting sand and sandbags to make it easier for some of the citizens in the burned area, so they don't have to come all the way into a fire station, so they can get sand and sandbags to start, you know, protecting their homes. We're going to staff 10 additional engines and utilities tomorrow, three heavy equipment operators, two additional hand crews, two swiftwater rescue teams, which has a use our component to one of the teams in case we do have debris flow into homes, and two task forces, which is comprised of our dozers, heavy equipment, loaders, and things like that, to move mud and debris off of roads, so we can get people to safety or get firefighters into where they need to do their work. So. And then also, we're implementing our Type 3 Incident Management Team and preparing our EOC, just in case it needs to be opened. So, that's a wrap. Thank you.
Chief, just before you leave, let me just, I gotta just give you, on behalf of all the firefighters, just outstanding job. It's, I think for many, it was the biggest fire they've ever been on. And having toured the fire, having some understanding of just the degree of difficulty that the firefighters and the sheriff deputies and the law enforcement faced with evacuation. A lot of times, we focus on how many homes we lost. I always like to point to how many homes were saved, which is in the thousands, probably the tens of thousands, when you look at the size of this fire. In, you know, hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars of property saved. And while we don't want to minimize it, only three lives, which is quite remarkable, given the velocity of the winds and drought conditions and everything else. And as I said many times to the news folks, it is virtually impossible, I don't care how many firefighters you throw at it, when the wind's blowing and the drought conditions and the type of conditions that we have, the fact that we didn't lose more structures and more people is extraordinary. So I know everybody feels the same way, but one professional or another, I'm just going to say thanks. You guys did a fantastic job.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Who do we go into next?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm going to bring this discussion to within the city limits of the City of Thousand Oaks. The Hill and Woolsey Fires burned approximately 7,000 acres in town, and as you heard earlier, about 5,700 acres were open space. The map that you have before you shows you the city boundaries, shows you the fire boundary, and shows, the green is actually the open space area. You know, these open space areas are part of the natural beauty of Thousand Oaks and help to make it a wonderful place to live. But after a fire, these areas become denuded and are susceptible to increased runoff and debris flows. It's important to note that protection of private property adjacent to these public open spaces is the homeowner's responsibility. And to date, over 5,000 sandbags, filled sandbags have been provided for the public, the citizens of Thousand Oaks, to pick up at our municipal service center and at the library. And we continue to provide, have bags available for people to pick up. There are approximately 529 properties that are adjacent to and down slope of open space impacted by the fire. City, as well as professional staff from California State OES, Office of Emergency Services, County Watershed Protection District, and the Natural Resource Conservation Services have reviewed the largest watershed burn areas. Preliminary findings by both, preliminary findings, I'm sorry, by both Natural Resource Conservation Services and Ventura County Watershed show that there are no significant structural improvements are needed in the city or county's drainage system. There were 93 residents that were also identified near smaller watersheds with drainage, near drainage flow areas that are subject to increased debris flows due to the fire. Staff reached out to each of those homeowners and delivered mitigation literature, including a homeowner's guide for flood, debris, and erosion control published by the County of Ventura. Copies of this guide, as well as frequently asked questions, are also available on the city's website and at our public counter. We heard from the chief about the properties that were damaged in Thousand Oaks. There were actually 55 properties that were affected by the fire in Thousand Oaks. 31 residents and one commercial building were destroyed. Five homes were damaged and are no longer habitable, and the remaining have various levels of damage, damage and remain, but remain habitable. A majority of these structures were damaged in the Woolsey Fire on the eastern side of the city, as is evident from the map. On November 9, 2018, the Ventura County Health Officer declared a local emergency due to the potential widespread toxic exposure as a result of the fires. This declaration means that no removal of fire debris from damaged residences or businesses is permitted until a hazardous material inspection has been conducted by an authorized state or federal agency. These inspections are scheduled to begin in Thousand Oaks the week of December 3, next week. They are expected to be concluded before the end of the year, and these inspections are done at no cost to the homeowners. The second phase of debris removal and cleanup is managed by CalRecycle and CalOES. This phase of the work requires the homeowners of destroyed homes to sign up for the program, starting the week of December 10, but does not cost the homeowner any money out of pocket. However, the homeowner is required to sign over any insurance payments received for the debris removal portion to help offset the cost of that program. That Phase 2 cleanup will start in early January and is expected to take up to three months to complete. We know that our residents are anxious to get started on their rebuilding efforts, but both of these programs are truly the most efficient, cost-effective, and responsible way to remove the debris. So we appreciate and ask for your patience and continue to work with us to get this process started. We also anticipate that during the fires, many residents may have used significantly more water than usual to protect their homes and potentially their neighbors' homes, for that matter. Staff is requesting that council authorize us to make adjustments to water bills based on water usage in previous years during the same billing period. We are also requesting that council authorize waiving wastewater bills for destroyed or uninhabitable residences until rebuilding is complete and a certificate of occupancy has been issued.
So moving on to rebuilding, the staff of the Community Development Department and Public Works Departments are working together to look at the process and information that we have in our records to help families rebuild their fire damaged homes as quickly as possible. We are looking through our records to see what type of permit history and plans we have on file, so that we can assemble those into packages and provide those to the homeowners to give them a head start on working with an architect, to have plans redrawn for the purpose of rebuilding. We're also looking at the process itself and finding ways to make it streamlined and speed up certain aspects of it. At a minimum, we will be providing shorter review times and turnaround times for applicants who are rebuilding fire damaged homes. But in addition, we're going to look at all of the regulations that also apply and the process and procedures, and study them to see if there are ordinance changes that we might want to bring back to council in early 2019 that can effectively streamline the process for these homes. So the combination of the information, the fast-tracking, and looking for ways to improve the process are intended to get these families back into their homes as quickly as possible. There's also a number of resources available from local and federal assistance programs, described in the staff report, and they're on all of the websites that are related to this topic. And they range from county rental and housing assistance programs to the Disaster Response Center that is now open at Jan's Marketplace. That replaces the local assistance center that was open for a short period immediately after the fire in the library, but now that has moved over to a long-term location at Jan's Marketplace. And FEMA's located at that location, as well as there are other groups like SBA that provide assistance, particularly low-interest loans, to homeowners and businesses to repair or replace damage. There was a local business stakeholder meeting held yesterday as well, where a lot of this, of the assistance options were also discussed.
Access to reliable and trusted information during the emergency was of utmost importance. The public was heavily relying upon the city for accurate, timely, and trusted information. We saw a significant increase in online engagement during the two fire events, and we expect to continue to have an increased level of engagement as we go through the recovery phase. Focus communications will remain a priority for the city to help residents understand the recovery process. As we move into the recovery phase, the primary source and hub of information is this joint county-city website. It is VenturaCountyRecoveres.org. The website is modeled after the website. That was a joint effort between the City of Ventura and the County of Ventura during the Thomas Fire. So again, this website will serve as the hub of information for residents, and we are continually providing updates to the website in hopes that our residents will receive the information that they need to continue along through the recovery process. And that concludes our presentation. We have staff available from each of the departments to answer any questions the city council may have.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Powers?
Yes, thanks, Mayor Fox. I just wanted to wrap the staff presentation by acknowledging all of the staff that worked so hard throughout this incident, both in our Emergency Operations Center, some of which worked all-night shifts in shelters that don't traditionally do that type of work. And all this on the heels of the tragedy of the shooting, and the team just pulled together in an amazing fashion and has continued to deploy that same level of effort in our recovery activities. And, you know, most notably, Ingrid Hardy, our Assistant City Manager, she has really been quarterbacking our efforts in working closely with the County of Ventura and really leading our fire recovery activities. It's no small order to coordinate and synchronize all of the various local, state, and federal support entities that descend upon you in this type of event. She's just done a fantastic job at working with our internal city staff and all of our county and other governmental parties to do that. So I just want to say a special thanks to her, and I know that she will be continuing to lead our efforts moving forward. We recognize that this is going to be a long road for those that aren't in their homes today. And it is something that each and every one of us is thinking about first thing when we wake up in the morning, and we're committed to doing everything we can to help those affected residents move quickly back into a place where they can be back in their homes. And that being said, we also recognize it's a lengthy process. And as Peter was outlining, all those efforts, we're constantly going to be looking at ways to shorten that. But in reality, knowing we've already interfaced with our partners in Ventura that recently went through this, and we know from a timeline perspective, realistically, you're looking at at least a year period. And many times, these folks are in rental properties or even outside of the community during that period. So our focus is going to be to get them in as close to that timeframe as we possibly can. So with that, I'll hand it back to the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Any further questions from council? This department will report, and so we just need a motion to receive and file a report. And yes, there's the recommendations that are listed, three recommendations. Ms. Bill, let me know.
Thank you. I do have questions. Questions regarding the debris removal by the California DTSC. What is it, the California Department of Toxic Substances? And what does the C stand for? It escapes me.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that last part of that question?
I have a question about the debris removal
Yes.
By California's Department, the DTSC, the Department of Toxic Substances?
Yes.
Yes, okay. If someone does not have insurance, you say that the homeowner doesn't have to pay, but they have to turn over insurance payments. If someone doesn't have insurance, then how is the cost covered?
The cost of that program is actually covered by the state. It's actually the CalRecycle program that actually will take insurance, but the answer to that program is if you have no insurance, then it's covered by the city share and the state.
Okay, so our city share, which is $250,000?
That is an estimate, and yes, that's correct.
Okay. So that is the cost of the city's general fund. Wait, is this, no, Solid Waste Fund, okay. Then we have a volunteer group called Rubicon, which is comprised of veterans who are assisting in debris removal. Are they working with the DTSC, or how are they working? Are they working with the county?
I am, I know of them, and I am not sure how they have integrated into this process at this point in time, but we can get back to you on that.
I mean, they're signing up people, and so I was just wondering how that process works at the library when they were there.
I'm not exactly sure.
Okay.
I have to get back to you.
One thing we do want to stress on that is we know throughout these disasters, there's a lot of well-intentioned volunteer groups that are attempting to assist. And we just want to stress throughout this process that the DTSC cleanup group will begin their work next week. That is a really remarkable turnaround time in terms of the fires that are being, have impacted the entire state. So the fact that they've been able to engage and get involved in our community here locally, we want to encourage, and we have done this for those that we've interacted with, those 31 homes and the others that are damaged and uninhabitable, they should be working through this program. This is the most efficient and effective way to ensure that your property is going to be appropriately cleaned and certified and ready to move you forward in the building process. It's a state agency that is authorized to do this work.
Thank you. Then, question about, you mentioned rentals, people are staying in rentals. I know of one case where the rent has been hiked incredibly now. So what can, if anything, the city do in times of price gouging?
Yeah, I think you and I have had a brief conversation about that. City adopted a resolution as part of its emergency declaration to prohibit price gouging, but that does not cover rental programs. It does cover things like water and basic necessities. With respect to rental programs, there's no resources that the city has to impose rent control during these situations. I had conversations with the county regarding concerns over price gouging for rent, and they are aware that it is a concern. It happened up in Ventura after the Thomas Fires, but there's really no recourse to impose any type of rent control on either houses or apartments during this time.
Okay. I think that's important to note to the public because I get questions, what can you do in order to keep these rents from going up? And the answer is nothing. Then, when it comes to rebuilding, is we are hiring, we're going to hire planners to expedite the process of permitting and such. Are we encouraging, or can we encourage new construction to contain improved building materials, building materials that can withstand fire and earthquakes better than normal, traditional wood construction can? For example, the insulation concrete forms, the ICFs, are known to withstand four hours. That's the fire rating versus 15 minutes for regular construction. What can we do, the city, to encourage residents when they rebuild to use materials such as ICFs, which on average are anywhere from 2% to 3% costlier in construction than traditional construction, which really isn't all that much?
Yes, there's a variety of things that will happen in the design of the new homes. All of the homes will have to be built to the building and fire codes of today, so they will be improved over when they were originally built. There are certain building methods that are more effective than others, that would exceed the code. We can put together worksheets and packets of information that have those alternative approaches and make the, and convey the message that with just a little more investment, you might get this much more in protection, but we wouldn't be able to require an owner to do it.
I understand. Yeah, we can require it, at least not yet, until the state changes its codes as well. But time and again, these homes that are made of different materials, such as ICFs or other stronger materials, they're the only ones standing after a massive fire. And same in earthquakes, same with hurricanes. So perhaps this is also a wake-up call to Sacramento to realize that while we cannot control climate change necessarily completely, certainly we can change building materials to make our homes more fire-resistant. And then finally, I also wanted to talk about the help that we had from the mutual aid, firefighters coming in from other states. When I saw Behar County fire truck, I couldn't believe it. That's San Antonio, Texas. So Mississippi, Georgia, they came out here to help us. We couldn't do it on our own because what we faced was something nobody has ever faced, going from a mass shooting to a fire. And that was a vicious fire, a vicious fire. And as well-trained as we are and as great as we are in terms of our firefighters, it was wonderful to see the support from other areas and getting phone calls from New York, even, what can we do to help? I simply cannot tell you how deeply grateful I am to see what we have endured as a community, what the first responders have endured. And I just really thank God, and I thank you all for sticking through thick and thin and continuing to do so. Really appreciate that. Thanks.
Any further questions to staff on this report? Okay, hearing none, we have no speaker cards, so you need a motion to receive and file a report with the four recommendations. Yes. Mr. Price.
I will move staff's recommendation to include those, or move the report to include staff's four recommendations.
All right. Mr. Price moves 9A with recommendations 1 through 4. Discussion on the motion. All right, hearing none, prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0.
And that is approved. We're going to move to item 9B, that's also a departmental report. That's the consolidation of community grant programs. And Mr. McComb, you're going to handle that report. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, we are preparing to present a report to you that actually has been almost a year in the making. It was just about a year ago that representatives from the Cultural Affairs Department, Community Development, Public Works, and Library started meeting to look over the existing city's community grant programs. Our objective at that time was to evaluate the organizational structure, the guidelines, and effectiveness of each of the community grant programs. And those programs include the community enhancement grants, the community events grants, social services grants, and the sports facilities grants. I'm going to spend just a couple of moments to provide you with a little bit of history on the grants program, and then Heather Cousin will go over you, with you, some of our findings and also our recommendations. So the first grant program was actually established back in September of 1985. And at that time, it was created to support local nonprofits that had a limited capacity to raise funds. And the funding that was provided was to support local nonprofit services in the community, to provide funding for improvement of facilities throughout the community, and to help promote the city. Each of the nonprofits that received a grant was required at that time to also be able to demonstrate an ability to raise additional funds to match the funding that they were receiving from the city. The community grant programs eventually split into three programs. The community events grants, sports facilities, and social services. In early 1900s, 1990s, rather, city council established two ad hoc committees to review the applications of the various grant programs. And that was the Community Funding Review Committee that oversaw the community events grants and the sports facility grants, and the Social Services Committee. In 1998, the city established another grant program, which was the Community Enhancement Grants Program, and that was funded with $1.6 million to fund community projects, and that ultimately was increased a year later to $2 million with monies being drawn from some of the Public Works funds. In 2000, a general fund restricted account of $6 million was established to ensure the long-term funding of the CEF grants, sports facility grants, and the Social Services Grants Programs. The reason for that was so that the grants could be funded by interest earnings drawn from those restricted funds, with supplemental funding coming from the general fund and the solid waste funds. In 2001, the Community Funding Review Committee was revised to act in a formal advisory capacity for city council to oversee all of the programs, forwarding recommendations to you each year for your approval. In fiscal year 2010-11, the community grant restricted funds were increased once again from 6 to 8 million dollars to try to address the shrinking interest income and to keep all the grant programs viable. Finally, in 2010, responsibilities for the events fund grants were transferred from the Community Funding Review Committee to the new Cultural Affairs Commission, which has been administering those grants for the past eight years. I think one thing that's very important to note is since 2000, over $6 million in grants have been awarded to approximately 300 local individuals and nonprofits for all four programs. And that was kind of a startling finding for us because the fact that they're dulled out in small amounts and don't always receive as much recognition for the city providing those grants, it was kind of amazing to us, the amount of money that has been dispersed. And if you really think about it, the grants program really started back in 1985. So if you were to include all the monies given out from the starting period up to 2000, which is as far back as we could go with record finding, it's an astounding amount of support that the city has extended to these organizations. This chart is really to show how the funding has varied from year to year. The true thing to look at here is the blue line, which shows the interest earnings. So one of the challenges that the grants program currently faces is, you know, with low interest rates and being invested in the conservative investments that cities invest their money in, the true interest really does not pay for much of the funding of the grants, and the difference has been made up through the general fund. At this point, I'll turn the presentation over to Heather.
Thank you, Barry. And as Barry has outlined, these grants cover a variety of projects and programs, and from the arts to the environment and to sports, they support things that really make Thousand Oaks a unique and wonderful place to live, work, and play. Through the years, the council has adopted several methods by which to award the grants to organizations and individuals seeking to enhance teams, facilities, and projects throughout the city. And as you see, the community enhancement grants are managed by staff in Public Works and provide funding for a variety of environmental and sustainability projects. Those grants are reviewed by the Community Funding Review Committee. And the community events grants are made for cultural arts and special events, supporting such programs as candidate forums, concerts, and travel to music competitions. And currently, these are reviewed by the Cultural Affairs Ad Hoc Committee, and they're overseen by staff in the Cultural Affairs Department. The sports facilities grants are overseen by staff in the library, and they cover improvements to athletic facilities and fitness facilities throughout the community and are reviewed by the Community Funding Review Committee. The social services grants are reviewed by the Social Services Ad Hoc Committee and provide funds to supplement the operations of several agencies operating in the city, including Manna and Senior Concerns. And as Barry said, they make up some of our largest grants over the years since the city has been giving out grants since 1985, and they're overseen by staff in the Community Development Department. Now, one thing you may have seen from this entire overview is there's commonality among these grants and the grant programs. However, the way we've managed them historically has been different, from the forums to deadlines to promotion, and even to the close-out reports and contracts. Each department's been doing things slightly differently, which isn't a bad thing, it's just that it's created those inconsistencies, which in some case has led to some inefficiencies. So funding has also been challenging, as Barry talked about, over the years through the word, although the word endowment has appeared in their name, these grant programs were not true endowment funds, which would ordinarily fund the grant programs on interest income alone. As you saw earlier in the previous slide, due to declining interest income, these funds have largely been supplemented from the general fund budget for several years, or in the case of the community enhancement grants from the solid waste fund. What you see on the current slide, then, are the possible options for funding going Going back to the committee portion of this proposal is we would recommend going back to a single committee structure as we had in the past. We think that this would not only give committee members a more meaningful service experience as they'd have an opportunity to oversee a wider variety of project proposals in a number of areas, but they would also have less of a possibility of having conflicts of interest as they serve out their term of service. If you approve this resolution, the existing committees would be dissolved, and we would begin recruiting for the new single community funding review committee in January. And this new committee would have nine members, each of them with staggered terms. Aside from the advantages of keeping the grant committee consistent, this proposal also allows us to create greater consistency among the grant programs themselves, as we mentioned earlier, which has the potential to enhance the transparency and increase the long-term sustainability of the programs overall. Additionally, managing the grants program in this way allows staff more time to focus on, as Barry mentioned, promoting the positive outcomes and community benefits of these grant programs. This large amount of money that's been expended throughout the city, you know, it's something that largely has gone unnoticed over these years, and we'd really like to make sure that that's something that we change going forward. The Community Funding Review Committee will return to the city manager's office, meaning that the recruitment and management of the committee itself would happen there, but the grant management piece would continue in each respective department. Community development would still remain as a social services piece. Public Works would have the community enhancement portion. Cultural Affairs would still oversee community events, and Library would retain the sports facility grants. Again, this slide outlines some of the immediate benefits of the proposed changes, and with that, we're here to answer any questions that you might have, and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Questions for staff? Ms. Bill De La Pena.
Thank you. Quick question. So, single committee deciding everything basically in committee, then what also that the overall responsibility will be under city manager's office? So if there is an issue with any of the grants, how can someone who doesn't like the decision by the committee then appeal?
Well, the direct contact would be through the city manager's office, through the Community Outreach Department, and then it would also involve whichever of the specific grant programs the department that provided the administrative oversight over those grants. So if it was something to do with a community event grant, then the initial inquiry would come through city manager's office, and then the Cultural Affairs Department would be involved in responding to the concern.
And I'll add on top of that, it's not very dissimilar from the way it currently happens informally. Generally, if there's a dispute or an issue, it arrives in the city manager's office, and then we'll work with those departments.
Just wanted to make sure that there is, as mentioned, transparency. Okay, very important. Thank you.
Any other questions? Let me just ask, I guess, Mr. Powers or Ms. Hardy, if council was inclined during the budget cycle, given the history slide with respect to the amount of return on the investment, when would be a good time to do that? When they have a budget study session?
So I'll jump in while Ms. Pascarino is coming down. The Finance Department has been involved as staff from these various departments have been working on this project over the past year and sort of looking at these funds. When councils set aside these various funds in various ways over the years, they were set aside and called endowments, but in large part, they're not in endowment separate accounts, meaning earning endowment-type interest, they're in traditional city accounts. So with that, and the expenditures over time, there's an obvious need to buttress those funds over time. So I'll let Ms. Pascarino respond. Obviously, the budget process would be the right opportunity, but when would be the best chance?
Yeah, certainly. We did this in the past during the Great Recession. We suspended the sports facility grants for two years, and that was done during the budget process as part of the BAG recommendation. So certainly during the study session, if we were having budget challenges at some point, that would be a recommendation that staff would bring forth, that we would suspend one or multiple of the grant programs.
And I think what Mayor Fox is asking in terms of adding additional monies, if they wanted to look at it, and additional monies to buttress these accounts based on the historical trend lines here, the opportunity coming up in this budget cycle to do that.
That could be done actually at any point, but certainly, we could do it during the budget process. Like you mentioned, it's not a true endowment, it's just part of our general fund reservation. So at any point, if council chose to increase that general fund reservation from the current $8 million to a higher amount to increase the interest earnings from that reservation, we could do that, but certainly during the budget process would be an appropriate time.
So I would just, I'm obviously not going to be here, but I just want to put as a placeholder, I think it's, these are really important programs, this grant money provides a lot of support to some really important programs. And, you know, I would encourage council, when you have your budget workshops, to certainly direct staff to come back with some recommendations. I don't think you should just start throwing out numbers for the dais, but come back with some recommendations on how these grant programs can be supported through the general fund. Because clearly, if you look at the, in terms of the endowment, it's not doing what it needs to do. So just a thought. Mr. Price?
Yeah, I, thank you. I noticed that the staff's recommendation is to keep the existing sources of grant funding as is, but I also see that the funding options here, maybe you know the answer to this, but in order to make that a true endowment, how much money would have to be in that for it to be able to fund all of these four different grant opportunities?
So currently, I think it was a little over $100,000, but I couldn't tell from the chart how much the interest was earning.
So total funding on a yearly basis, depending on the grants that are received, is around $300,000?
No, the interest that was earning currently.
Oh, the interest. It's actually, it looks to me to be about $50,000. Yeah, it's under $50,000.
So $8 million right now, $50,000, and you need $300,000, so it would have to be increased significantly.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, the way it currently works, we budget the expenditure, so whether the interest earnings are there or not, it gets budgeted, just using general fund fund balance instead.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Again, this is a departmental report, so we need a motion received and filed, and adopt the recommendation. Mr. Adams?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I will move 9B. I think it makes eminent sense to combine these different committees into one, be more accountable. And in fact, I'd like staff to get back to us maybe with some examples of how some of this money was invested. I think it'd be better use of staff time, make the criteria more consistent, and I could see where we could have more strategic giving. If one committee can look at the entire picture, from seniors to the youth to homelessness, whatever it happens to be that year, we can potentially give to where it's needed most, instead of working all these different separate committees. I mean, we invest a lot of money in this city, but I think this is probably the most important invested money that we do. So I will move 9B.
All right, Mr. Adams moves discussion on the motion. Ms. Bill de la Pena.
No, that's fine, thanks.
Okay. Any further discussion? So that's a move approval of 9B with the attached recommendation. Prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0.
And that is approved. We're going to move to item 10, that's Committee Commission and Board Reports, National League of Cities Youth Delegate Report. Ms. Nash, you going to handle that? All right. Good evening.
My name is Chloe Nash, and I am the Chair of the Thousand Oaks Youth Commission. We are here to talk about our experience at the National League of Cities City Summit 2018. First of all, we would like to thank Councilmember Price for recommending the Youth Commission to represent our city as youth delegates, to represent, and always supporting us. This is an amazing opportunity, and we believe we should continue it. We would also like to thank Ashley Humes and all the staff that worked to make this happen, and our staff liaison Francine Sprigle for being calm and keeping us focused throughout all of the tragedy. We also learned a lot from Mina Leba, and we look forward to working with her on learning about future legislation that affects youth. This November 8th through the 10th, the youth commission, five youth commissioners, including myself and one student representative, attended the National League of Cities City Summit in Los Angeles as youth delegates for Thousand Oaks. Each of the participants are here tonight to speak about their experience. On the first day of sessions, came the shooting at Borderline. Before opening session began, a moment of silence was held for our city and the 12 lives that were lost. Student representatives from an area near Parkland, Florida stood and spoke in solidarity with our city and gave us ideas on how to help our city overcome this tragedy. There were one to two students at each table who were affected in their areas from a mass shooting. While we clearly had the option to go back to our families and homes after the tragedy, even as the Hill and Wusley fire set in, we collectively chose to stay at the conference. It was exactly where we needed to be. We knew what we would learn and what we would be able to bring back to our city and allow us to best represent and advocate for our fellow youths and better the community.
Hi, I'm Shelby Shea. The days of the conference were filled with discussions about youth advocacy. We talked about long-term movements like March for Our Lives and voiced solutions for issues like mental health, climate change, prison reform, immigration, and civic engagement of local youth. We even exchanged some of our own advocacy projects with other commissions, the Therapeutic Dance, the Community Internships Training Youth Program, our youth summits and implementation, reality parties, and more. Looking towards the future, we thought through specific plans for how to sustain advocacy in our communities and exchanged great ideas of the program and events to implement.
Hi, I'm Shelly McKeown. The conference sessions captivated our interests through engaging activities where we had the opportunity to meet youth from all over the country. In all sessions and workshops we attended, there were aspects that were interactive, which allowed us to hear ideas and events from other commissions. We even got to network with adult city council members from cities all across the country. Hearing ideas from other delegates inspired us to expand on our programs and advocacy. The workshops that we collectively opted to attend covered the implications of redlining and equity, leadership for boys and men of color, and efforts to balance local democracy within the context of state legislation.
Hello, good evening. I'm Matthew Globke. We left the conference feeling empowered to make a change in our city and to use our influence as commissioners to better represent the needs and the ideas of our youth. Some of the youth councils we met described how they actually helped draft legislation in their communities, deliver written opinion or verbal reports on the dais of legislation affecting youth, or have council members attend their youth commission meetings. We talked to members of the Greensboro, North Carolina Youth Commission, who worked with their city council to lower the voting age to 16 in local elections. The youth in Austin, Texas petitioned their city's 11 o'clock curfew and rallied the public around the idea. This advocacy effectively changed the mindset of the public, and the city council abolished the law.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sarah Loffenberg, and I am the Vice Chair of the Youth Commission. At the conclusion of the city summit, our commission was encouraged to meet as a team and discuss our new knowledge and priority items for youth in our community. We discussed working with city council and other community leaders to promote a youth agenda that includes discussions on vaping, fitness, safety, inclusion, sustainability, and intergenerational activities, as well as more youth involvement in the legislative process and youth delegate programs. We will continue discourse with community leaders through the Youth Leadership Summit and our reports to city council. It was important to us that we represented the City of Thousand Oaks well at the conference. We want to ensure that the youth voice in our community is best represented now and in the future.
Hi, I'm Eddie Nash, Westlake High School student representative. We would lastly again like to thank Councilmember Price and the city for allowing us to attend this exceptional conference, and we hope for your consideration to extend this rewarding opportunity to future commissioners. The city summit gave us strength in challenging times for Thousand Oaks. The discussion of happenings in our city immensely prepared us to come back and help our community after both the fire and the shooting. And of course, we had fun too, and enjoyed some important time for bonding as a team. Thanks to Mayor Garcetti and the City of Los Angeles for generously providing an evening at Lucky Strike for youth delegates. Thank you.
All right, questions for, Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank all of you for attending. I also want to thank Mina, who I kind of put this all on back a couple of years ago when we knew that we were coming to LA. It was decided pretty quickly that we wanted to have our youth delegation there, and I appreciate that you were there. I also, a big shout out to Francine, as she tries to sneak away. And as you were probably aware, I wanted very much to be there. However, given the events of Wednesday night on into Thursday, that just made it more necessary for me to be here. So I'm sorry that I missed it, although I do see that you met some friends of mine. I see a photograph with Karen Freeman-Wilson from Gary, Indiana, the mayor of Gary, Indiana, who's the incoming president of the National League of Cities, and I'm sure you met a number of other folks, too. Did you get to meet Clarence Anthony, the executive director of NLC? No? Quite a character. You heard him speak? Okay, well, then you know, he's quite a character. But again, I do hope that you got a lot out of it, and I hope that you're inspired and that you'll consider attending some of the future conferences. So gives you something to think about, anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, very good. So just on behalf of everybody, thank you for representing the city well and doing the great job that you do. Sarah, say hi to your mom and dad. Okay? Her dad was a classmate and teammate of mine at Cressby High School about 35 years ago, so. All right, with that, we need a motion to receive and file. Mr. Price?
I would gladly make the motion to receive and file the report, and thank you again.
All right. Discussion? Vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0.
It has approved. Item 12, or Council Issues and Recommendations, Mr. Price?
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. After the events of the Borderline shooting, it occurred to me that in the City of Los Angeles, any police officer who dies in the line of duty is recognized, and I think it's important that we do the same thing here in the City of Thousand Oaks. To my knowledge, this is the first Ventura County Sheriff's deputy killed in the line of duty in the City of Thousand Oaks since we have been engaged in a law enforcement relationship with him, and I think it only fitting that we honor the memory of Sergeant Ron Heelis. There are a couple of ways that we can do that, and I wanted to propose to my council colleagues here that we consider a couple of things. One of the wheels that kind of already put in motion, and that is a conversation with our Assembly Member Jackie Irwin, who unfortunately had, has done this before, when Eugene Kostyachenko was killed just a few short years ago in Camarillo. There is a memorial to Eugene alongside the freeway. So that requires that action be taken by the city, requesting that a memorial be established along the highway, and we, I think the staff has already taken the initial steps to initiate that process. So I'm hopeful that my council colleagues will continue to pursue that. In addition to that, I think it would be very fitting if, excuse me, if we were to honor the memory of Sergeant Heelis, close to where the shooting actually occurred, whether it be the street, renaming the street, or positioning some other memorial in his memory. I would hope that the council would proceed down that road as well. With that, if there's any discussion, I'd like to hear it. Thanks.
Ms. Bill de la Pena.
Thank you. I didn't realize that Sergeant Heelis was the first one to be killed in the line of duty in the City of Thousand Oaks. You mentioned Sergeant Eugene Kostyachenko, and he was killed by a drunk driver, was it? Yes. And, but that was outside of city limits? Camarillo, exactly. So of course, it is appropriate to honor him, and perhaps look at naming a street after him as well. At the same time, I'd like to see if that option is also available to those who serve with the Ventura County Fire District, whether that is possible, and we cannot forget the other 11 victims in the shooting. And certainly, the city is working and will be working on finding a way to remember the 11 others who were killed in this horrible shooting. So certainly, I am in support of this proposal.
And if I may, just as council's contemplating recommendation to staff here, what I might offer is certainly the pathway that Councilmember Price mentioned to work with the state on freeway dedication. We've already made some initial inquiries to that effect, and we're happy to continue proceeding down that path, given the direction, that's certainly a high level of distinction and certainly very, very visible. So that is certainly one piece, and should council make that direction, we will absolutely continue to proceed forward with that. As it relates to a more broader recommendation of considering some permanent placement, whether it be street naming or permanent memorial, both for the, those killed in the line of duty and those from the borderline incident, there's going to be a lot of discussion and items that will end up coming back to council in terms of a memorial. So I would just ask that the council consider giving broad recommendation for us to come back with some suite of options, and that way, we can interface with the families involved in that situation and other ways. And that will take a little bit of time. But as it relates to the first piece, I want to make sure that we're continuing, if it's the council's wishes, continuing to move that forward with pace, because that, as Councilmember Price knows, that process does take some time.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Of course.
Yeah, I certainly acknowledge the fact that there needs to be a memorial to the other victims of that shooting, and I know that that's part of a much broader discussion and is going to take considerable time. I would also offer that, and I don't often offer the City of Los Angeles as a model for much, but one thing that they have done there, I think, is to honor their fallen firefighters and police officers, and the mayor certainly knows what I'm talking about. And it's, I think I forwarded a photograph of what that looks like in the City of Los Angeles, and so if that, you know, is one of the ways that we can do so, then that might be something that can be taken up on a county-wide level, and I will probably speak with the new sheriff in town about potentially doing that and honoring the lives of the, I believe it's 13 deputies who've been killed here in Ventura County. I think it's 13. So, thank you.
Mr. McCoy?
Councilmember Price, you have my full support of your recommendation, and I will work diligently towards that. I also wanted to say, it was an honor being with you in the early morning hours, just your wisdom as a retired officer, and witnessing how you processed all this, and I know it hit home with you, and I just want you to know, I'm going to work towards that.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. I do need to correct that number, it's 14. It's actually 14 officers who died in the line of duty here in Ventura County. And obviously, making that situation a little bit more dramatic for me was the fact that I had a son who was out there, so, thank you.
Mr. Adams? Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. Joel, I want to thank you for coming forward with this idea. It's a wonderful idea. I'm glad you did it. And Sergeant Ron Heelis's name needs to be remembered for the sacrifice that he made. I can't think of a better place than on the 101 freeway with the thousands of people that drive by there every day to see his name. Great for his memory, great for his family, great for our city. And I like the idea of a street near the incident as well. And I think Claudia, that we will come up with a memorial for the other victims ultimately. So it's a great idea, Joel. Thank you.
Yeah, I, again, I think the broader memorial for the victims will take some time. I know council's probably received many emails, as I have, on a variety of suggestions, all good, but as council recognizes, all have their logistical things that need to be sorted out. Sergeant Heelis was, yes, a Ventura County Sheriff's Sergeant, but he was a Thousand Oaks Police Sergeant. And I can tell you that when the city decided to contract with the Sheriff's Department, it was very clear and it's remained through this day and I would expect into the future, Thousand Oaks Police Cars, while they are staffed by Sheriff's deputies, it says Thousand Oaks Police Department. That's not by mistake. That's the reason. So I do believe Sergeant Heelis is the first Thousand Oaks Police Officer to die in the line of duty in Thousand Oaks and it absolutely warrants special recognition by a street name. I think that is 100% appropriate. We've named streets and buildings after other folks in town who contributed a lot to this community, but certainly didn't give their life. So I think that work needs to be carried on. Good idea, so. Do you need a motion on this? City, okay. We need a motion for these two items. Mr. Price, you want to make the motion?
I would. I would like to move the staff's recommendations, number one and two.
All right, Mr. Price moves one and two. Any further discussion? Hearing done, prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries five zero.
And that is approved. Item 13 is the City Manager's Report. Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Mayor Fox. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be your final city council meeting. Will be our annual reorganization meeting, which will be held on the 11th of December. That is one of our formal meetings of the year in which we will be presenting seat dedications. There'll be presentations to outgoing mayor and outgoing councilmember Price, the seating of the new council, and then selection of our new mayor, a mayor pro tem. So that meeting is scheduled for the 11th of December and that is it for my update.
All right. With that, we will adjourn to our regularly scheduled council meeting, our reorganization meeting, to December 11th, 2018. We are adjourned.